Rocko Limetone.
Thank you. So can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I want to start by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, safe travels especially, and stay safe with coronavirus. But, you know, this is my one time of the year where I really thank all the board members for, you know, everything that you do to prepare for our meetings and, you know, be here and et cetera. So it's great working with the team that I have here and all of our professional help as well. So.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the dirty word "snow" comes up because it is now, we're heading into the colder weather. In the event of snow, and we're going to have a discussion about whether we want to have a meeting by Zoom for December, I would suggest we consider it, but we'll double-check it with the town hall folks just to be sure. Because governor's executive order right now allows us to do virtual meetings through the middle of January. So we, right now, can only consider our December meeting to do that, and it's just a couple days after Christmas, so we might want to consider doing that. But in the event, in the event of snow, normally what would happen is the meeting just gets canceled. We do not postpone it. We don't reschedule it. It just gets canceled. And so any public hearings that would have been on or anything on the agenda just gets moved to the following month. So this way, if we do it electronically, it doesn't matter when the weather is it, because people can just join us and we don't have to worry about it. So do the board members, I need to make sure you guys can be here. Do you have any objection if we do it by Zoom?
No.
I'm either Zoom or in person. It's fine with me.
Okay, so the next meeting date would be Tuesday, December 28th. So like I said, it's only three days after Christmas. So stay tuned for any of those who will be scheduled for a public hearing for how we're going to do it. You'll be, you'll get the information about that. All right? So our next meeting, December 28th, January 25th after that. So again, if we don't do it by Zoom, in the event of snow on December 28th, the meeting would be the January 25th. We do have one set of minutes to approve. I circulated them with just a handful of suggested amendments. So do we have a motion to approve them as amended?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Good, thank you. All right, we do have to adopt the schedule for our next meeting. All of these dates are the fourth Tuesdays, so we didn't run into any conflicts with any holidays or anything like that. So do I have a motion to accept the schedule for our December, for 2022?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye, good. So we're good to go. So just for those of you who are new to our meeting, the way it runs is the first part of our meeting is public hearings. These are applications that this board has already had an application, had an opportunity to review. And then we notice your neighbors so that they have the opportunity to tell us anything that we might not be aware of, just because they're likely to know the property better than we are. And then the second part of the meeting would be reviews, and those are generally the first time we've seen an application. And so you'll see the board will work through any issues on those applications and then scheduling for a public hearing. There is no public comment on any reviews this evening. Your neighbors will be noticed and to come here and give us their comment or send a letter at the appropriate time. So we just have a handful of items on the agenda. I don't have any changes to the agenda, so I'm just going to jump right in. So item number one is a public hearing. Appeal 4017 Heidi Delez. Heidi Delez, 74 Moore Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot or 120-square-foot pool cabana, and a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we had an opportunity to review the application last month. You are in Port Corners.
Yes.
Which is a cluster subdivision, which means that your lots, you actually have smaller lots because some of the property, when that property was subdivided and developed, was created open space. We left permanent open space, that there's some trails and some other things.
Yes.
And just really open space available. So with smaller lots, you also have slightly smaller setbacks, but not that much smaller. So I believe as you, you've already, you did got a permit put in your pool. Now you look and put a cabana in and a patio, and then we ran into the issue of it ended up being a little too close.
Yes.
Okay, so did you, did we ask you to get a new survey? Did you update your survey?
Yes, it's.
Okay, so did, is it in our folders? Because we would just have to check about the patio. That was what the issue. We were wary the patio was a little too close.
It was.
It was too close.
It was. Okay.
You were on point of.
So when we noticed it for the two feet, we covered ourselves? We were good?
Yes.
Okay.
A foot and a half, to be exact. It was a foot and a half.
Foot and a half, okay. That's fine. Just, we actually always round it off to the next, to the higher amount anyway. So, all right, so good that we noticed that. And so we did ask you about, were there other places to put it? You really said there really wasn't. There was only 10-foot difference between the cabana where it was and the pool area and everything. So there really wasn't another place that you could put that. I think that was really all that came out of this. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I have none.
Okay, so, excuse me, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Heidi Delez, 74 Moore Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot cabana, pool cabana, and a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, they're neighbors' letters?
Yes.
Hold that motion. Thank you. People have to keep me honest. All right, I got to read this thing. So we have a bunch of neighbor letters.
Any opposing or just in favor?
That's what we're going to say. Date at October 27th, we have one from John Fernandez, 76th Moore Road. I'm writing in favor of the described variance. Date at October 27th, Jason Collins, 7 Sandalwood. I have no issues with the variance. Okay, a date at October 27th from Joseph Savio, 5 Sandalwood. Have no objections. Date of November 13th, Dwayne and Jeannie Hampton, 111 Boxwood Circle. They give a different name, but that's okay. I'm not going to, for Eric and Heidi Guzman?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, that's fine. We approve the variance and the cabana on their property. They happen to like you. We have known Eric and Heidi to be very responsible and respectful neighbors who are always mindful of others since they have moved here. They're very kind and thoughtful people who are considerate of their neighbors in the neighborhood. They are good people, always willing to lend a hand. It's great to know. All right, next, Eustatia Spencer Hill at 73 Moore Road is a letter intent in support of. So that's no issue. Date of November 17th from Garth Dixon, 57 Moore Road. I wanted to give my approval for the variance for the pool cabana. I wanted to say Heidi Delez is an excellent neighbor to have and bring. So, great. And dated November 16th, I don't want to pronounce this wrong, Graene Jacob?
Oh, Grana.
Grana?
Grana. Grana.
Grana, okay, sorry, thank you. At 81 Moore Road, I have no objection to the variance. She's an amazing neighbor. I love to hear that. All right, dated November 19th, this is the last letter from Joy Alvarez Vasquez and Ray Vasquez. We take no issue with the variance request. So with that, with all those support letters, now we're adding to the record. Now do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, this is appeal number 4017. Applicant is Heidi Delez, requesting a variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance for a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot, 120 square-foot pool cabana, and a two-feet sideline variance for an existing patio. In parentheses, the variance is a resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the lot was created as part of a cluster subdivision, and whereas the applicant realized that these variances are, were required after applying to install a generator, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECUR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on November 17th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November 23rd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will still remain residential in nature. The result, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing pool and the nature of the lot. Due to its being part of a cluster subdivision, the variances are not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Heidi Delez for variances, for the variances from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance, for a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot, 120 square-foot pool cabana, and a two-feet sideline variance for an existing patio. Be further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Rocko?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries. You guys are all set.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. You too. I have one more letter, guys, so you got to keep me.
Okay.
One more neighbor letter. All right, item number two, Appeal 4019 Jeffrey Fandel. 69 Kensington Drive, Hopewell Junction is requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by 40-foot in-ground pool and hot tub pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, we had the opportunity to review your application last month. You've got a hilly area on your property with lots of rocks and stuff. So this, the side of your home is really the only location you've indicated to us where you can put it. We did comment about the lack of screening or any vegetative cover, but you said you're going to do a landscape plan?
Yes.
So you're going to, your intention is, I mean, you're only going to enjoy the pool more when you have landscaping and a little bit of privacy there, so.
Anything exposed to the road and the sidewalk, landscaping.
Yeah.
On the fence, inside and out.
That would, that would be great, because again, we don't want to have any, any issues with your neighbors. Sometimes pools generate noise by their users, so, you know, we always are very sensitive to that, you know, when we've got somebody with a pool that needs a variance. So comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I mean, this property is very, it's got a lot of rock and outcrop of rocks, so I have no issue with the location.
Rocko, any issue?
No, I don't have any issues with this.
Okay, so I have a neighbor letter I'm going to read before I even ask if there's anybody else. Excuse me, dated October 28th, from Janice Castarelle, Castarella?
Castarelle.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Castarella, 67 Kensington, so your neighbors. Our next door, to whom it may concern, our next door neighbor Jeff and Diane Fandel are in the process of putting an in-ground pool. They have asked us for a seven-foot variance for the pool, and we have no objections. Please feel free to contact us if we need additional information. So that's one letter. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jeffrey Fandel, 69 Kensington Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by 40-foot in-ground pool and hot tub? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Rocko, you want to go?
Sure. Appeal number 4019 Jeffrey Fandel. Project is a seven-foot sideline variance request from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance for a proposed 18-feet by 40-feet in-ground pool and hot tub, located at 69 Kensington Drive in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocko Limetone, whereas the applicant intends to install a pool and a hot tub, and whereas the pool and the hot tub will be screened by a fence and plantings, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECUR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on November 17th of 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November 23rd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Jeffrey Fandel for a seven-foot sideline variance request from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance for a proposed 18-feet by 40-feet in-ground pool and hot tub. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Rocko?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries. You are all set.
Thank you very much.
Now you can deal with the building department.
Just let us know when the pool party is. 18 by 40 hot tub, that's going to be some scene.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I'll be twisting by the pool.
All right, that is it for public hearings. So the rest of you are here because you want to do something that's not allowed by code or is allowed by permission from this board. So, but for each of you, it's the first time we're seeing your application, so we need to work through what is that you're asking. So number three, Appeal 4018 Peter Lamparello. 38 Hidden Acres Road, Stormville is requesting a variance to allow an existing 10-foot by 20-foot or 200 square-foot barn and an existing generator to be located in the front yard pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance.
So do I come here?
Yes, sorry.
I thought I was supposed to, okay.
It's like the Price is Right. Come on down.
So you're not Peter, I'm going to guess?
No, I'm his wife.
Okay, that's fine. You could, I don't know, you know?
I could be.
You never know. Okay, so the building inspector did go out, gave us some pictures. I will share them with the board members, so I can see where the existing generator is. I just want to confirm because we didn't have, you know, a conversation about the generator, obviously. Is this just for emergency purposes, this generator?
Yes.
Okay, so just in the event your power goes out?
Yes.
Okay. And so we can see the lot itself. There's a lot of trees on the lot. So the barn that you're, the use of the barn is, what is the barn used for?
Now just for storing plants and just decorations. And it used to be used for animals, you know, we used to have horses and nature's years ago. That was why it was put there.
So how old is the barn?
Uh, since 1997.
Oh, wow. It's been there for a while then. Okay. Why is this coming up now?
They put something else in.
Okay, just curious. Usually something triggers while you're here, so. And so just because it's in the front yard of the house, it's in front of your house, that's why, that's what the issue is.
Right.
Is it visible from the road? Is it visible to your neighbors?
Not, not by much. You just see maybe from the front of the driveway as you're, as you're entering, you might just see the top of the doors, of the barn doors. You don't really get a good view of it, I don't think. Maybe three-quarters or top of it.
Is it on the right-hand side when you're coming down the driveway?
It's on the right-hand side, yes.
And you see the two doors?
And you see the doors.
Right, okay.
Okay, so the survey that we have here is not really a survey. It's the proposed house, it's the proposed sewage disposal, so I don't know really where anything is on this, what we have, what we were given?
Yeah, that's all, that's all I could find, yeah, that's it.
So are there, was anything else built on this house? Because I don't, I don't know really where the barn is. Somebody drew it in.
The barn is as you're coming in to the driveway. It's, it's just a very small building. You wouldn't even, I don't even know if you'd call, you'd call it a small, it looks like a barn, but it's just a very tiny shed, I guess, is what you'd call it.
What's the, what's the floor of it?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know that. I didn't want to have that information.
Do we have a survey, a better survey?
No.
Well, we have, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, wow.
The same one. Yeah, it's this guy. Yeah.
It looks like a shed.
Yeah, it's just right there.
It's a shed, right.
It's a shed.
Yeah, it looks like a shed.
We don't know the size. We don't know the.
Well, it says, uh.
Yes.
25 turn.
Yeah, 10 by 20, but it's.
Well, where does it say?
And it's, it's off on the, on the. And it is right, I guess, right next to the house, but, I mean, normally we would ask for a survey just because we usually see what else is going on on the property, but in this case, I don't know. You guys?
Another, just. I think the pictures are.
Pretty clear?
I think they're pretty clear. Between that and the diagram here, you can really see where it is.
Well, again, it, okay, so there's no, it's still within the footprint of the, it's only that existing barn is there, but we, there's no neighbor issues and there's no setback issues. Well, that's true.
We don't know. We haven't noticed neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, as far as.
Because what we've been given shows just a proposed house, a proposed septic.
Yeah, that's what.
Nothing on here that actually says what was built.
It was just hand drawn, so.
I don't have many neighbors close. I mean, we have farmer that lives on the other side of the road and.
There's a house on Hidden Acres next door to you.
Right.
What's to the left of you? If you're coming down the driveway, here's the barn. What's to the left of you?
I have a stone, I have a garden path there, a stone wall.
Is there another house here?
And then, but it's farther back to the, to the left. The, who lives here?
Because I can see in the diagram that there's a house 300 feet to the right, or there's property lines 300 feet to the right, and 125 feet to the rear.
Right.
I just don't see what's on that side.
I have a house, but it's, but it's not close. It's farther back. I mean.
Yeah, but all of them are proposed properties.
Yeah, they don't know what the.
Approved house location. I mean, that's a proposed house, so maybe we need to update, updated survey to figure out what's going on in this property.
Again, we can, we have a visual here, so I'm not sure it's necessary, but at some point, you're going to want to get a survey done, just because this is not going to get you anywhere, but I don't know. I think it's.
I may, I don't, I could not, I could not uncover the survey at this. I couldn't find it, is my issue.
When you bought, when you bought the property, was it a vacant lot?
No, yes, we had initially built on it, yes.
So you, the house was not there when you bought the lot?
Years ago, no.
Okay, so that's why they don't have a survey, because your title report or something, when you bought the house, would normally give you a survey.
Right, I guess I should have, I guess there was a survey there, but I can't, that was all I could find at this moment.
How long have you owned this house, this lot?
Uh, since 1997.
Okay, so you put the shed up or barn up right away?
Right, as soon as, yes. Yes.
Okay. I don't know. I think it's.
I think the picture works for me.
Okay, so motion to advertise.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, please see, I'm Jackie, and there.
Your copy.
For your instructions further, sign.
And it'll be there in person or Zoom meeting next, in December?
Okay, so next month, I, on the 28th, I'll be in North Carolina, but if you're doing Zoom, I sort of.
Another reason to do it by Zoom. Okay.
We don't want to ruin your vacation.
Yeah, but she probably wants the variance, so it might be important enough for her to do it. All right. Item number four, Appeal 4020 Michael Gillespie, 75 Francis Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to allow a professional office in a residential district pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. So.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so I guess I'll start with, I'm not planning on making any big moves here in the immediate future, just so you're clear. I mean, everybody is aware where my office is.
Right.
Over on 376.
Right.
The town does have the ability to allow for an at-home business, which is the reason why I'm here tonight. And, you know, I'm not as young as I used to be.
None of us are, Mike.
Doing this for about 30 years now. So what I want to do is allow myself the ability to, I mean, I do some remote work at home anyway, sometimes when the weather's not so hot, things such as that. But if I did have a client and I was at home, want to stop by, pick something up or meet quick, I wanted to give myself the affordability to allow them to come to my home. I don't expect this to be a real rage here in terms of cars and things such as that, but there are certain requirements as per that section that we're required to adhere to. So I submitted a survey with the layout of my home, and this does have a separate access, so you don't have to go through the home to get to where it is. This, this area would be above my garage. So there's a set of steps on the right-hand side which people could access. Again, looking at the specific regulation, I think we meet all the specific requirements relative to that. But again, it was just to allow myself the affordability and the flexibility down the road. And again, maybe times of tough weather and so forth to.
The biggest issue we're going to have is, are you expecting any employees there?
No.
Because that's, your neighbors would should be, would, might be sensitive to car traffic, you know, with addition.
Yeah, I put in here, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to say absolutely, so I, you know, I think it allows one. So I did say there may that happen, but if I, if I down the road and make a move like that, likely there wouldn't be anybody. It would just be me, you know?
And you're, I know you, at your office, you have your van there, so you do have one vehicle. You're allowed one vehicle, so that's not an issue.
Right.
But, okay, are you expecting to put up a sign?
Who?
A sign.
I don't need to, no.
Okay, that, because that's what generally brings more attention to it and makes it look a little bit more out of place as well.
Yeah, and I realize I'm not on a.
But I think you're pretty far down on the street if I.
Well, wait, yeah. And I'm not on a main drag 82, 376, so maybe that would be a little more, I mean, I know that people have offices along those main roads and it makes it easier for access. I don't need a sign.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
I don't see, I mean, is it an access location from where this? I just see has a layout of the, of Mike's house. Is there any, is anything that I'm missing?
It's just the two attachments.
The two attachments?
Yes.
And what's the difference between the two attachments?
I know, you've got, you've got two copies of the same thing.
Oh, is that what happened? Because I was trying to figure it out.
Yeah, you just got two copies of the same thing. I just have a, you didn't get the bigger survey?
No, I didn't get the bigger survey.
Yes, you did.
So it's the same thing, so.
Okay, but anyway, let's see, what's the entrance like? So because you're like in a cul-de-sac and then you have to go.
Yeah, it's on the end of cul-de-sac. It's kind of like a flag load at the end of cul-de-sac, so there's another 400-foot drive when it gets.
Yeah, I know, it's like kind of tucked in, in a flag load in the back someplace.
Right.
So the front is, so you have, so yeah, I don't have an issue.
I mean, what I can do, which doesn't show on the survey, on the right-hand side, there's a, there's a flight of steps that go up to the separate door. I mean, I can.
You can bring it next time.
Tick that on there if it's a concern, but it's.
Yeah, so just bring it.
As long as you're within the building envelope of what you're allowed and you're not, you don't need a variance for those steps. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it because you're so far deep in the woods.
Right, there's a lot of vegetation in this area, so.
I don't have, motion to advertise?
Second, Rocko.
Question. You said it's going to be above the garage?
Yes.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, you too.
You too.
And last but not least, item number five, Appeal 4021 Robert Clark, 405 Holmes Road, Holmes is requesting an 11-foot sideline variance for an existing generator pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. And again, I, I'm not sure you're Robert.
I'm Kristen Clark. Yes, hi.
This is a night of, you know, let's.